We'd like to welcome everybody to the Rutherford County's School Board Special Call Meeting, April 4th, 2022. First order of business is Pledge of Allegiance led by Ms. Sheila Bratton.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation and my land, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Bratton. I'd like to invite everybody to join me in a moment of silence and ask that you please remember the family of Eli Kramer. He's a former Riverdale student who unfortunately we lost this last week. Number four, contract with TSBA for director search. Ms. Reed?
As the board will recall from the last meeting, the board voted to initiate the process with TSBA about assisting for it to request TSBA to assist the board with respect to the director search. To that end, we have a proposed contract from TSBA, which is their standard search contract, which will be before the board for you to either approve or vote on tonight or do as you see fit. The contract is a standard, like I said, TSBA Director of Schools Assistance Contract for a Search Process. The services that TSBA would provide will be consulting with the school district to make recommendations as to the timeline and procedures to complete the search, to develop a brochure, post a notice as directed by the school district, to process the credentials, check references, and screen candidates, to prepare and submit a final report and recommendation of candidates to the board, and to schedule candidates for interviews by the board and assist the board in preparing interview questions, and to review proposed contracts for the successful candidate. The cost of those services by TSBA is $6,500. That's what they normally charge for these type of services throughout the state. So that is the contract you have before you tonight.
Thank you. Members of the board, I would remind you that Ms. Grissom is on the line with us, so she can only hear you if we speak into the mic.
Correct. She is traveling back from East Tennessee. She had a board meeting up in East Tennessee today, so she says she'll be unavailable to be at the meeting tonight, but did want to participate by phone, so she's on audio only. So she is able to hear us tonight by audio. You do need to make sure you activate your microphone. She can hear you if you have questions for her.
Thank you. So members of the board, we have before us the contract with TSBA for the director search. Are there any questions or comments or concerns regarding that contract?
I think this timeline, is that separate? Is that going to be a separate vote?
The timeline is separate than the contract, yes.
Can we not get this before we sit down here at the table?
The contract?
Yeah.
This is TSBA's standard two-page contract, so for their service.
But we're expecting to vote on both of these tonight. There's no motion on here for them.
Yeah, the contract, yeah, I understand. The contract with the TSBA director search is on the agenda tonight. So, but, and this is the standard TSB contract for the $6,500 they normally would charge for the routine search process throughout Tennessee.
That is true, but we have several board members that have not been through this process before. And I would ask that you please send these out to us so we can look them over before we're sitting down and asked to do a vote.
Ms. Sharp, would you like to take a brief recess so we can review the documents in front of us?
I don't know that that's going to give us any more time to look at them, but I absolutely disagree with this timeline. We're backing into a situation here with these people. This is going to limit our candidates, this timeline, and to be putting a director of schools in, 7-1. No, this is not right. This is not right.
Okay, well, that is the second item. The next item is the timeline. We're currently on, members of the board, we're currently on the contract to solicit TSBA in contract with them to complete the director's search.
There's no motion on here. When people looked at this agenda, none of us saw that we were going to vote for this tonight. There's no motion. This agenda that we have here, we're always told what the motion is. I don't understand what the hurry is with this.
The pace that this search is undertaken is at the board's discretion, so that's what the board decides to do with respect to how it wants to proceed with the search, with an interim director or with a permanent director. That would be a decision for this board to make. The, you know, the last board meeting, we did vote to go ahead and proceed with TSBA and ask them to initiate the process, to begin the process of engaging them with respect to a director search. To that end, kind of the first phase of that with TSBA is to execute a contract with them. And this is what we've done historically over the last several director of schools searches. So this is consistent with what we have done the last several director searches.
And you have one, two, three, four people who are on this board currently who are not involved in that.
Yes. I understand. The agreement that you have before you is one that just is asked, TSBA will be working at your behest, at the control of this board, at the direction of this board, to assist you with the director of school search. So they'll be as involved or less involved as this board chooses. So it's up to this board to decide how much they want to engage TSBA for the services, but the basic core services they are providing is what's outlined in the contract tonight, which is to consult and make recommendations, which we have Ms. Grissom available tonight to do that. She can come back again. We have other TSBA personnel available to address questions if you have questions. But they basically are a form to vet the candidates and to initiate the search process. They have access through several national networks to do searches, not just in Tennessee, but on a national level, these type of for directors who might be interested in a new school system. And they can target jurisdictions of a certain size if this board wants them to do so. So all those, so what this board wants TSBA to do, TSBA is able to do. So it's an agent for this board to assist you with director of school search. So the contract here is a very simple contract because the board ultimately controls kind of what direction TSBA goes with the process. So, and if something TSBA is not doing that you want them to do, they are willing to do that. If you want to do a different timeline, that's what is outlined there today before you, the board can choose a different timeline. The timeline that you have before you, which would be a second item, is one that allows for the director of schools to be in place before the beginning of the next school year. So that is what the timeline is now. If this board wants to do something different and not place a director of schools in this position until after the next school year, that can, certainly that's something the board can do, and that will be a different timeline than what you have here. The timeline you have before you is one to place a director of schools in place before the beginning of the next school year. So if this board decides to go have an interim director and not even do this timeline, that's another option that's available to the board. So, but the timeline you have is one to meet the statutory requirements we have to meet by law to get a director in place before the beginning of the next school year. So, but that's the second, really, that's part of this item five on the agenda. The first item on the agenda is the contract with TSBA for the director search. And that's one, whether we, is the board going to engage TSBA to assist you with the director search? The cost of that is $6,500. And that's what we've done at least the last two director searches, and I think more than that, actually.
Yeah, I have been part of that process before, and I have no issue with TSBA carrying out these services for us. Again, if they don't bring a qualified candidate before us, we don't have to accept that person. But we do need to go ahead and start the process. So I would move that we go ahead and accept this contract.
Thank you, Mr. Young. So we do have a motion. We get a second.
A second.
Thank you, Ms. Bratton. So we have a motion and a second to approve the contract with TSBA for the director search. Ms. Hopkins, would you take the vote, please?
Ms. Matrul?
Yes.
Mr. Ippis?
Yes.
Ms. Bratton?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Holden?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Next item is the director of school search, search criteria and timeline. Ms. Reed?
So we have some of the, and the last item, we hit on some of this stuff that we're talking about now in item five, is the school system needs to establish a timeline for the selection of the next director of schools. You've got a proposed timeline that you have before you tonight that accomplishes that a director of schools be in place before the end of the school year. So they'll be in place as of July 1. The board is not obligated to use this timeline. This is just a proposal. So if you want to propose a, if there's a different timeline that someone wants to propose, that is something the board needs to take up as a board, and you decide what you want to do. So, so there's two things, basically at the core that the board needs to decide is with respect to the timeline, kind of talk about what you want to do as far as the timeline for the director's search. And secondly, kind of the criteria for a director of schools as well, which is, was kind of, we hit on some last time, which was in that brochure, which you guys saw at the last meeting. And there was some discussion after the, in the context of that last meeting, well, about whether we would require a doctorate or not, a doctorate degree for the next director. So that was one question. The other point I remember being discussed was should we limit our search to candidates from a certain sized school system with a certain number of students? So that's another factor for this board to determine. All the, from a state law standpoint, all that you have to have to be a director of schools is a baccalaureate degree. So so long as you have that, that satisfies state law requirements for a director of schools position. But it's up, this school, this board can impose higher requirements than the state law requires if you choose to do it. And to that end, I do, I think Ms. Grissom has been involved with a number of searches throughout the state, as you know. She's actually, that's one of the things she was doing in East Tennessee today, assisting a county there with their director of search. So with that, I guess I'll, if it's okay with the board, kind of turn this over to Ms. Grissom to, for her to give her insights and advice or answer any questions you have with respect to the timeline for a director of school search and the search criteria for a director of schools.
Yes.
And Ms. Grissom, are you still there?
I am here.
Okay. You have the floor.
Okay, well, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chairman, and members of the board, and Mr. Reed. You did an excellent job of explaining our services. As he mentioned, the timeline that you have in front of you, we just base that on having someone in place by July 1. As he mentioned, whatever timeline you all want to propose is what we will do. TSBA is just here to assist the board. I think it was Tammy that mentioned earlier that she didn't think the timeline allowed enough time maybe to collect resumes. I think in this day and time, back when you could only mail things in regular mail, it did take longer. But we're part of a national association of superintendent searchers that just about every state is part of. Once we send this brochure out, once the board approves the search brochure, that will go out nationwide with the click of a button. So it's not like we can't get the word out quickly. If you all, say, for instance, if you approved the brochure tonight, we could get it out tomorrow morning. So I do think, and we've had boards do searches in this timeframe, giving us three or four weeks to collect application, I think is ample time. Most candidates know to come to our website for superintendent vacancies, so they know to look for our announcements, they know to look to our website. So I do think that this timeline is feasible, and I do think you will get quality candidates. With that being said, however, I work for the board, so if you want to change the timeline, then change the timeline. But what you have there will work.
Thank you, Ms. Grissom, or Dr. Grissom, excuse me. This is Tiffany Johnson. If we get, when we get into this process, if this timeline needs to be amended, that's completely doable?
Yes, that's, it's the board's timeline. You all can amend the timeline as you see fit.
Thank you. Members of the board, do you have any questions for Dr. Grissom?
I would like to follow up with some of the comments that I made. It says here, the interview candidates may 16th through May 20th. Four days to interview candidates. I mean, that's only going to work if you've got candidates here. I've already got phone calls, people, people already are saying that we have picked out who we want for this.
That is, that, I can speak for myself.
Whether it's not, whether it's the truth or not, but that's the perception.
It is absolutely 100% inaccurate. Well, I appreciate you making that statement.
That's the perception. Four days to interview people, that would only work if you had them here.
Ms. Sharp?
People have to travel in and out. This, I don't, I don't understand what the rush is. There's four of us on this board that are up for reelection. Four of us may not be back here. And to set a director of schools before the election is wrong. It's wrong.
Ms. Sharp, a couple points. First of all, there is no candidate selected, which is why we're engaging TSBA in this search. Secondly, we serve our entire term regardless of elections. This is not a political decision, but as seated members of this board, we have a responsibility to our community to place a superintendent and to search for one immediately.
Watch the rush. Mr. Spurlock is here to the end of June. We can always send an interim. If we expect to get candidates from over the United States and not just here locally, backing into the schedule is not going to work.
And Dr. Grissom has explained that we can modify this timeline if, if the board so chooses, and if candidates are not available or we are unable to recruit appropriate candidates, that this board decides or deems appropriate, we can continue that search and extend this timeline. That's absolutely feasible. Dr. Grissom, Tiffany Johnson again, is there, do you, do you share in Ms. Sharp's concerns in travel or in the interview period?
Well, I think once you contact a candidate and tell them that they're a finalist, typically they make arrangements to be at the interview, whatever date the board decides. So I've not run into that issue in my experience, that typically if a candidate is truly interested in your district and they've applied, they make their schedule work, whatever timeline the board's established as the interview dates.
Okay, thank you. And is this timeline one that's been used in other systems in the state?
Not exactly. I mean, I have had a board a few years ago, did one in a, we only advertised, they only wanted a two-week advertising period. So honestly, this timeline is up to the board. We can do your search to whatever timeline that the board chooses. If you want the vacancy announcement to be out there for two weeks, three weeks, four weeks, five weeks, it's totally up to you all. But I think the timeline you have before you is definitely doable. If it's not what the board wants, then we can adjust it.
Thank you. Any further questions for Dr. Grissom?
I would like to ask one question. Dr. Grissom, typically, how long of a time period does it require you guys to get someone out prepared for us?
To get what?
How long does it take you to identify the candidates? How long does it take you to go through?
We typically, to screen them, once, when someone applies through our online portal, we typically start reviewing their, their documents as soon as we receive them. But we bring in a screening committee, and I typically like to have at least a week, if not a week and a half, for us to go through all the applications, call the references, and make sure we're selecting candidates that best meet the criteria adopted by the Rutherford County Board. Because you may have a candidate that was great for Shelby County, but is not a good fit for Rutherford County. So we look at all of those things. We look at, I think someone mentioned, you want to make sure the candidate has experience in a similar-sized district. Whether you put that as a minimum qualification or not, we will try to find candidates that do meet that. I will say that it's sometimes hard to find candidates that have as large a district as you all are. You can get candidates that are close to that, but you'll, as you know, you're, whatever the board decides is the minimum, we can do. But yes, sir, I typically would like at least a week for our screening committee to go through the applications.
This timeline is, is what I would consider being within your normal timeline whenever you're out here doing a candidate search for other school districts.
Yeah, I mean, according to this timeline, it's about a month for the vacancy to be out there. And I think, I think that's plenty of time, but you all may not. But I just, I just developed the timeline based on the information that was given to me by Mr. Reed, so.
Ms. Grissom, Claire Maxwell here. I'm very interested in making sure that we catch, cast a wide net. I want to make sure that we get the best person for this school district. And yes, I would like to be someone that's familiar with a district this size. I definitely want to go out of state. I want to make sure we get as many candidates as possible so we can get the cream of the crop. What, how, do you think we'll be able to have a good pool of candidates in this amount of time, especially if we go out of state? Because I do, I don't, the right candidate for us may not be in our state. He may be in Georgia, he may be in Florida. But I want to make sure we get the best candidate.
Yes, I do think this timeline does allow for that. As I mentioned before, we're part of a national network. So once I click a button, it goes to all states across the country. So, yes.
So there's no public input on this agenda or on this schedule? Are the parents, the stakeholders not going to be able to put their input on this?
Well, I-
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought she was asking me.
No, go ahead, Dr. Grissom.
Are you talking about once, during the interviews, Ms. Sharp?
Yes.
Is that what you're asking?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for that question. We do recommend a interview schedule for the candidates, and it is an entire day for each candidate. The candidate would, if my interview, say, is May 22nd, I know I need to be there all day. The candidate would meet in the morning with like your central office, principals, for an hour. And the candidate would give like a 10-minute, here's who I am, and then the remaining 50 minutes would be for them to ask questions. Then you would have a luncheon and invite business, community leaders, mayor, county commission, those folks. Have them come for a luncheon. Let the candidates speak for 10 minutes, and then let the remaining 50 minutes be for them to ask questions. Do the same thing for teachers and faculty and staff after lunch, around 2:30, 3:00, whatever time you all think's appropriate for your school schedule, same thing. And then at night will be the actual interview by the board, which is in a public meeting, and then anyone can observe. So I do think we have a sample schedule, Ms. Sharp, that we get at your comment to make sure everybody gets input. And we also have developed a form, and the board may or may not use it. It's a candidate reaction form. So if you go and listen to a candidate, you can write, you know, which candidate you'd like or don't like, and give that to the board. It's not anything the board needs to tally and compile the results and post them. It will just be simply, you look at the forms and kind of get a feel of what your business, your community, your teachers, your faculty, staff, all feel about the candidates. So I think we do have a good interview schedule proposed, that we proposed to board. I just, I just met with the Blount County Board tonight, I presented finalists to them, and the same schedule is what I proposed to them.
Thank you. Further questions, Ms. Sharp? No, thank you. Any additional questions for Dr. Grissom?
I do have one. What by law, and maybe this is more from Mr. Reed, what does the law say concerning having a superintendent or interim in place by the start of the school year?
Well, you have to have a director, someone that's serving the role of director of schools beginning the July 1 of next school year, because we have the existing term of Mr. Spurlock entering, ending June 30th. So we have to have a director of schools, whether that be an interim or a permanent one, as of July 1. So if the board sees fit and decides you don't, haven't made up your mind about director of schools, you can appoint an interim to sit in that position until the board does make up its mind about who it wants to have in the role of director of schools.
So as we get into the, I guess, reviewing of the candidate's credentials or whatever, if we don't feel good about it at any given time, we can appoint an interim to make that-
Correct.
-still meet the law.
Correct. You can do that.
Thank you.
Yeah, as been pointed out before, if you don't, if this board doesn't like any of the candidates that TSBA brings back, you're not stuck with those candidates, you can start the whole process again. Or do, or go a whole different route if this board decides to do that.
At some point within a timeline, we say, well, we've just got to an impassable situation. We don't have any candidates. We must do our job and put an interim in for the school year if the timeline drags on.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Any other questions, members of the board? When it comes to the criteria and the brochure, are there any questions, amendments, anything for Dr. Grissom while we still have her with us?
Dr. Grissom, do you want to, would you mind addressing about whether you should require a doctorate for this position or not, and what your experience has been for that?
Yes. Obviously, it's up to the board, but most boards, I would say a majority of the boards will say a doctorate is preferred. They don't say doctorate required. There are a few boards that have said doctorate required, but the majority will just state if they're going to include that, that a doctorate is preferred.
Thank you.
That will have to be put back in policy if we go that route.
Sorry?
That will have to be put back in our policy if we go that route.
Preferred or required?
There's nothing there now. They took doctorate preferred out before when Mr. Spurlock came in.
Any other questions, comments?
I don't agree with that.
Wait.
I think we have it in there as preferred.
It came out. It came out of the policy.
Well, we can review the policy, but I don't remember us doing that.
Ms. Ridley, can you help us with that?
I'm looking up the policy.
Thank you. regarding the criteria?
regarding the criteria?
I think if she looks at policy 5.802.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. For qualifications, it says a professional educator's license, a master's degree in education, three years of successful experience in school administration, such other qualifications as the board deems desirable.
So with that language, Mr. Reed or Ms. Ridley, would this board have to take action to include a doctorate preferred, or is that language already with the, with the ending language?
I think if the board decides to go ahead and say, we have a preference for, for someone with respect to this search with a doctorate degree, you can add that as a preference with respect to the criteria that you're doing now on this search.
Would we need to amend our policy?
You can amend it later, but it's, the search criteria is set by the board. So you are here tonight to select your search criteria. So you can set the criteria as the board chooses to do that, whether it be a direct, requiring a doctorate degree, or just say preferred doctorate degree, or leave it silent. You can do that as well. But if you want to have a doctorate degree preferred in the criteria, that's something this board can do tonight.
And might I add? I would add that to the brochure under, there's a section before you list the criteria, it's called minimum qualifications. So I'm not sure who read the policy, but I would include that master's degree, I think it was three years' experience, and then right after that, I would state whatever the board's going to say, doctorate required or doctorate preferred, right at that section of the brochure.
Thank you.
Could I have Ms. Ridley read that again?
The qualifications, Ms. Breton?
Please.
Number one is a professional educator's license. Number two, a master's degree in education. Number three, three years of successful experience in school administration. And number four, such other qualifications as the board deems desirable.
Does that cover what we're talking about?
It does, but if you want to have, if you want to advertise positions, say, doctorate preferred, it's better to be in the advertisement that you publish. So if that's something the board wants to, I'm not saying you do or don't, but if you do want to require that, or have that as a preference, you should state that in the brochure when it goes out.
Well, I want to state it, but what I'm saying is what the policy language, doesn't that cover us without having to read and address the policy?
It, I believe it does.
Okay.
I don't think there's a need to address the policy if you want to add-
Because number four says, and any other language we wish to, to put in. Okay. Well, I just wanted to make sure.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, comments, concerns? Any questions for Dr. Grissom while we still have her? And if not, we will entertain a motion. And we are voting on adopting the search criteria brochure that's in front of you and the timeline as it's, is it presented to you.
Don't move, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Estes. Thank you, Mr. Young. Ms. Hopkins, would you take the role, please?
Ms. Maxwell?
Yes.
Mr. Estes?
Yes.
Ms. Breton?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Sharp?
No.
Mr. Holden?
Yes.
Yes. Item passes. Thank you, members of the board. Thank you, Dr. Grissom, for being with us this evening. Members of the board, we're going to take a short recess, and we will come back for our regular scheduled meeting. We are adjourned for the special call.
We're doing five minutes?
Five minutes.
Okay.